With the executive session, I'm going to continue on with the agenda. Next item for business is Pledge of Allegiance, so I'd ask if you're -- stand if you're able and join me.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Our next item on the agenda is public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on something not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, I will move on to recognition, and we have quite a bit of recognition tonight.
We do.
So I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the committee, members of the audience, nice group tonight. I'd like to call down Greg Thomas, principal of Nichols Middle School, down to the podium. He has a special recognition. Each year, we recognize our student who was chosen to participate in the Project 351 program, run by Carolyn Casey through the state. They just celebrated their big day last weekend, I believe, last Saturday, and Greg has a few things to say about our recipient, our proud recipient.
So I'd like to call her down, if that's okay. Tavaia?
So, Project 351 started in 2011 by Duval Patrick, and it was his second inaugural, and he wanted to focus on young people in the community. So what he did was create Project 351, which one eighth grader from every town and city in the state of Massachusetts comes together in, it was last Saturday in this case, and they united through youth service and leadership. So here at Nichols Middle School, the way we come up with our student to send is we ask our eighth grade teachers to nominate students, and I think we had maybe six students that were nominated, and from that point, we have all of the teachers vote on who they would like to represent for Nichols Middle School. And Tavaia was chosen, and if you can indulge me for a second, I'd like to read what her teacher said. "Tavaia is always kind to whoever she meets. She'll often go out of her way to make sure everyone feels included, and she does not hesitate to help others. She makes time for all those around her. On top of that, Tavaia has a wonderful sense of confidence and sets high expectations for herself as well as others. Despite her confidence and outgoingness, Tavaia never makes others feel less than her. She always looks out for the positive side to a situation and always looks for a person's strengths. She celebrates everyone's uniqueness and accomplishments. Tavaia shines, and she wants everyone else to shine as well." So we are psyched that she represented Nichols Middle School, and I'm happy to have Tavaia sitting next to me, and if you want to kind of share your experience.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So, Project 351 is a nonprofit organization to help people in need all around the state. And like you said, one eighth grader gets picked from every town and city around Massachusetts, and we all went to a meeting at Faneuil Hall on Saturday, and then, following the meeting, we all dispersed into service, which there were four different, like, service places. And I went to Service Village, that was at UMass Boston, and we meal prepped food, and we made thirty thousand meals to be sent out to people who needed them. And then, we went back and had like an after-party at the JFK Library, and it was pretty cool.
Did you get to meet Devin McCourty?
Who?
Oh, no. A patriot. He was...
He was there, but we didn't get to meet him.
All right, all right.
Mr. Baker, Governor Baker was there too, but we didn't get to meet him either.
Awesome.
Did you enjoy your time?
Yeah, it was fun. Met a lot of cool people.
And from past understanding, it's my understanding that you start a project on your own?
Yeah, we have to do spring service, and starting in like, at the end of March, and we have, we do a clothing drive for Crayons to Crayons.
Right. And you'll be doing that through the school?
Yeah.
Okay. And so if people outside the school wanted to drop off material for Crayons to Crayons, what kind of things are you looking for?
Gently used clothing for like kids, like kid sizes, because Crayons to Crayons is a nonprofit organization where they donate clothes to kids who need it, but can't afford to get it on their own. So, people can go in and get stuff, or sometimes they deliver stuff to people who can't get there to get it. So they put together like bags or boxes and bring it to people, and they're like, oh, this is for your son or daughter, and it's like, it's free.
Great. Other questions? Mr. Olber?
Sorry, I missed it. Did you say you're starting to collect right now?
No.
Or in the spring?
In the spring.
Okay.
Because we have to do it for spring service, and then we have another meeting in Boston.
Gotcha. Yeah, I'm sure you'll have plenty of opportunities to get the word out, but I'm sure I speak for the rest of the school committee when I say you should come back here and let everyone know when you're starting to collect for that, and we'd be happy to try to get the word out ourselves too, for you.
Thank you. Um, the student council, the, Mr. Finch runs the student council, he's the health teacher here, and he said that they'd help me out too.
Other questions? Well, Tavaia, thank you for coming tonight. We really try to have the 351 representative come before this school committee each time because we think it's an important project. We're extraordinarily proud that you represented our community, and I hope you're as proud as we are. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair? Next in our recognition, I'd like to call the directors and the cast of Shrek the Musical down to the microphone area. As they're coming down, I wanted to share with you that I did have the chance to attend the show on Sunday afternoon, the Sunday matinee, the finale, with my daughter Grace, eleven years old, and all of her friends, and they all had a blast. It was a great afternoon, there was a lot of families there, a lot of young families there, and the auditorium was as full as I've seen it for a show in a long time, and that was the Sunday show. And my understanding that the Friday and Saturday shows were just as, the crowds were just as big. So, welcome, everyone, and would you like you to share some of your experiences with the musical? How it went, how it started, how you feel now, how you felt then?
Yeah, just to start, you talked about how you saw that was the auditorium and how full it was. That was the most people I've ever seen, and our directors were telling us they've ever seen in that auditorium, which was a really good thing. We were glad to see everyone there. The show itself was interesting to hear at first. Everyone laughed at it, but as we, you know, found videos of it, we started to realize what good show it could be, you know?
Brendan, I think your characterization of Shrek was dead-on.
Oh.
Seriously, with the Scottish accent, and it was amazing, you know?
Yeah.
That'll do, donkey. I mean, right down to the lines, it was beautiful, so.
Yeah. The Scottish accent was one thing that I had been working on for a while.
You worked on it, clearly you worked on it.
Yeah.
Because you didn't come out of character, which was awesome, so.
Yeah, yeah. It took a lot to do everything. I give props to our directors and music directors, Sam Mosher and Patrick Converse, they did so much that we barely got to see all that they did, and quite frankly, the show couldn't have gone on without them. They did some amazing work with the show, we can't thank them enough. But when it actually came to show night, everyone was super stressed, to say the least. It was...I don't know how to describe it. It's a feeling that of worry that you don't really get anywhere else.
So Brendan, why don't you introduce some of your other cast members and what role they played in the show, perhaps?
I'm Harmony, I played Fiona. Yeah, it was really fun to do, and that role especially was a lot of fun to put out on stage and do in front of people, so.
I know the rest of you aren't shy, because I saw her first.
You'd be surprised.
My scene partner a lot of the time was Paul Hastings, my donkey.
Behind here, we have our little mistoo role. She played, do you even have the list?
Gingerbread Man?
I don't have the list, but I played quite a few characters. My favorite was Gingy, and then there was young Fiona, and also one of the three black mice, so.
She was all over the place. We have two of our three stage managers.
Awesome.
You know, Chain of Command, it's director them, and they kind of kept us all in line when things got rowdy or people were stressed. I say stressed a lot because there was a lot of that.
I did send a tweet out about going to the show, and I remarked the fact that the crew was pretty much student-run, and you guys were on cameras, you were on mics, you were coordinating with each other, and just absolutely fabulous. And what was the total number of students in the production with background and full? I counted about seventy-five, or maybe even more, between seventy-five and ninety anyways on the program. I know there were some people that did dual roles, or sometimes three roles, but it was really amazing. Pinocchio was really funny, too.
Yes. Mike was great.
Yeah. But a lot went into that show, especially the building of our extension, which was a big...that was early on that our director talked about that. He talked about an extension to the stage, which was already a good-sized stage, so all of us, when we heard that, we were like, that's not going to happen, and then it did, and then we all got scared.
It was actually really nice.
But it came right out in the orchestra pit. And it was really cool, and you were right on top of the, right on top of the audience, which was great.
It's really nice to be able to interact with your audience more, and having that since the stage is normally set back more, you can't always see the audience's faces, and being able to come out on that and sing to them or say the lines with them right there makes the audience feel more like they're inside of the show rather than just watching it, and it's a really cool feeling when you're up on stage to be able to see their faces.
How many of you continue on with Satchem Singers? Anybody?
I'm in both Satchem Singers and Concert Choir right now.
I've been in Concert Choir for the past three years, and I did Satchem Singers two years.
Great, great.
Yeah, that's led by Patrick Converse.
Absolutely.
Wouldn't have it any other way, because...
Would our show director and our musical director like to say a few syllables for anyone, or?
Absolutely.
Come on up.
Proudly.
Pat Converse and Sam Mosher, school committee.
Thank you for inviting us here tonight to acknowledge the production. I think they said it best, that a lot of time and hard work went into this production. This was personally my third year as musical director at the high school. Every year has just been, my goal has just been really step up the caliber, really kind of get the engagement not just in the student performers, but also in the audience's enjoyment of the show, and from everything that's been said so far, I like to think we've been successful with that.
And Patrick, in your band in the pit, I noticed that you had current students, you had alumni, and you had a musical faculty member, Nicole Fantasia?
Yes. The pit was actually one of my, it's been one of my goals actually since I started really directing the musical to incorporate not just current students, but also any alumni that might be interested, as well as reaching out to faculty members. So, I did have the privilege of having Ms. Nicole Fantasia as my flautist and piccolo player. I had many returning alumni as well, from Tal Taylor, John, and Beth Borstam, as well as Tim Maxwell, who's closer to my grade, class of 2008, as well as Bobby Margatich, his first time being in a pit band ensemble as well. Both of them private lesson teachers, both of class of 2008, so we had a little bit of the old blood, you know, not that I'm old, but the older blood mixed with the newer generation, as well as inspiring the current students as well within that pit band. So, everyone's getting the experience, whether it's the returning veterans to kind of take them under their wing almost, to really incorporate, like, this is what it means to be in a pit band. So, that's the real goal we try to go with, with educational theater anyways.
Awesome.
Mr. Chair? Specifically to that piece, when we talk about our plan for district improvement, when we talk about...
Interaction, sorry, we talk about the interaction with the community, and the community extends to the alumni and all that, and what better way than what you just, what you're talking about is bringing alumni back. I know Mr. Pittsley has an alumni band that some people play in, that they work on, and things like that, getting the more recent, I say more recent because I was eighty-nine, so the more recent graduates that come through, and keeping them involved. It's a great piece, and I'm glad that you're doing that on top of everything else, because when you're on stage, you might think there's a lot of stress, you might be a little shy, but when you're on stage, it's all, it just disappears, and you're on that stage, and that's, you'll use that in life, when you're out there getting your first job, and that interview, and you're meeting with people, and you'll do that same thing. I just think it's awesome. I like the fact that we keep the arts in the schools, too. Big part of it.
Mr. Mosher, anything?
Yes, to actually build off of that point, none of this couldn't have, none of this could have happened without the community. When we were conceptualizing the show, we realized what an ambitious project it was, from the scenic design to the costuming, and a large amount of that tech. We actually had alumni help there as well. We had a score of returning graduated students come in, and whether it was runs to savers, sewing, hot gluing, painting, carpentry, we had a number of alumni-based build days that that show could not have happened without. We are incredibly proud of our current and graduated students and community for everything they've done to make Shrek the Musical happen this year.
So it took a village.
Always.
And then some.
To build a swamp.
So what's your next show going to be, and are you all going to come back?
At this, at this point in time, it's a little early to be really deciding officially what the next production would be. We definitely have many ambitious students that, as soon as, I think it was even Tech Week, they were already talking about the next year.
Next year.
Like, can we just, let's finish the show first, before we start thinking of it.
While we haven't chosen the musical next year, we are looking forward to the new facility and all the opportunities it's going to bring, and as well, we are currently rehearsing our METG Festival show, which is our competitive piece that we actually travel for. We cast a show, hundreds of schools across the state participate, and eight schools per host site will go compete on February twenty-ninth, and then the three will move on to the next round, and hopefully, we'll be one of them.
Is that the Boston Globe Festival?
Because I know there's a banner above the auditorium from early 2000s where...
Yes, yes, it was renamed after the Mass Educational Theater Guild to get over.
Good to know. Appreciate that.
And also, having been on the competition with that, the new facility will allow us to host for the first time, if we can get in that mix to host those productions, and we don't have to travel to Duckbury or Marshfield.
Yes, we've actually, we've been talking to some of the guild members, and they are equally as ambitious to hopefully in the future have Middleborough host some competitive pieces.
Mr. Olber?
Admittedly, more of a question for the students involved, but I'm sure that there are kids out there that are kind of on the edge and would love to maybe go into this type of work, but they're maybe a little nervous, or they just haven't taken the leap, and I wonder if you guys had any advice for those that might want to get involved but haven't yet? Yeah?
I'm, I've always been in more of the like behind-the-scenes action, because I have actually really bad stage fright. I helped stage manage the show this year, and I always do like crew behind-the-scenes, I'll be doing it for a competition piece. Honestly, like, even if they're not comfortable getting up on stage and like doing anything, doing stage crew really helps, like, you're still involved, you're still a big part of the production, but you don't have to say a single word to anyone. It's really convenient. I'm sure they'll all tell you, it's, I'm sure it's very fun if you don't have stage fright to get up on stage and do a show, but I have really bad stage fright, so I prefer to do the behind-the-scenes stuff, and it's really fun, too, like, you get to meet, like, I met a lot of my good friends now from being in stage crew, and you still learn the show just as well as everyone else, if not better than everyone else, because you have to be super on time with everything. So even if they were too anxious to be on stage, I would suggest starting out with stage crew, because then maybe you'll find something, you're like, oh, maybe I should try that someday. I think it'd be really good for them.
Mr. Chair, that kind of leads to the follow-up question, so are you considering maybe trying a part at some point?
I've thought about it. Our last show of the year is our That's Entertainment show, and that's kind of the time when all of the seniors, before they leave, jump in, and they're like, they take like little roles somewhere, and a lot of people have been trying to convince me to do that. As you can hear, everyone behind me telling me to do it. I'm thinking really hard about doing it, it's going to take a lot, but I might. I'm thinking about it.
And I would also like to add in, coming from the perspective of an alumni from Middleborough High School who actually did not start, I'd never performed in a musical actually during my four years there, and I actually didn't start being on stage for SDW productions until That's Entertainment, my junior year. And then, of course, got hooked right onto it, I started doing it, I think I was in all three productions that were available my senior year. All left me was regret of not doing it sooner, so for anyone watching who's still regretting it, just jump into it.
I saw a Sunday show, my daughter's in the show, and I think she had a great time, and I want to say the pit orchestra was amazing, because you played almost the entire time, and I've played in pit orchestras, it's hard work to keep playing that one. So I thought it was really professionally well-done on all levels, acting, stage managing, music, I thought it was a great show.
Thank you very much. I definitely had a lot of fun conducting it. Everyone was saying like how my arm was feeling after the whole weekend, among many other things. I kind of progressed that whole week, but it was a lot of fun, a lot of fun to put together, and it's really a great experience, so I'm glad we could open the opportunity, not just for performers, but also for stage crew.
Yep.
As well as for the musicians that we, you know, do have under our roof.
Excellent. Thank you.
It is an amazing tradition in Middleborough High School, it's been going on since the seventies, early seventies. As a student at Middleborough High School, we did A Model and the Night Visitors, we did HMS Pentafore, we did Anna Get Your Gun, and we did Anything Goes in four years, and all great shows with huge sets. We had HMS Pentaforehead, we had a three-masted schooner on the stage at Middleborough High School, so it was pretty, all with ropes and everything, so it was pretty cool, and it's always, it's a great tradition, and I really like the fact that you guys have continued that tradition, it makes me proud, so, thank you.
I'd also say to you guys, too, I had a daughter who went to SDW, went through the four years of SDW. You guys, you know, the important thing is, continue it. I can't tell you how many kids I know, and I know Ms. Mosher you know, who've continued on to college, but I'll also tell you, even if the number of production groups around Middleborough itself is incredible. I mean, I think we have three theater groups here alone, so there's always opportunities to keep it up, and it doesn't matter whether you perform or do backstage work or anything, just keep it up and have fun with it, so, and thank you guys for doing it, because it means a lot to the community.
Thank you all very much. Does anybody else have...
Anything else to say who didn't get a chance to speak? You're certainly welcome to, donkey.
Thank you, guys.
It's great, thank you all very much. And Mr. Chair, I'd like to invite Ryan Silvy, our athletic director, Coach Kingman, out of order a little bit, down to the stage with Hannah Sterns, a senior at Middleborough High School, who was going on to play lacrosse at Framingham State University, and she had a great honor, first of its kind locally, and Coach Kingman and Hannah and Ryan Silvy are here to talk about it. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Coach Kingman?
I guess I'll go first, yeah.
Why don't you introduce the, introduce the award?
The award is the Autogram Award. This year was, I believe, the thirty-eighth year that they presented it. It is at Grading New Bedford Volk High School. It originally started with, I think it's about seventeen schools from the area, eighteen schools?
Yeah.
Eighteen schools from the area, and I believe the origins of it really had to do with the Standard Times, New Bedford Standard Times, which we've kind of, at some point, really aren't covered by them as much anymore, but they're all together now. And the story behind the award has been, and it doesn't always go this way, but it's supposed to be, you nominate one student from one of those schools by the coach, it goes into a voting pool, and you're supposed to nominate based off of multiple criteria, but it seems to me that some people just vote off of pure stats and send, you know, names in that way. Traditionally, we've...
Talked about it.
Since Mr. Silvy has been here, and we try to send someone that we believe is not only someone that's done something special on the football field, but has strived academically, and I think maybe even more importantly, is a good person in the community, in the school community. So, this was an opportunity this year, you know, when you look at academics and football, all that good stuff, Hannah was playing her first year of football, which she could probably talk about more about that, about how that all happened, and we nominated Hannah for the award, and went through the voting process, and I think a kid from New Bedford may have won it, but you probably remember that better than I do. But it's a great event, you go there, you kind of meet all the other nominees, and you have a pastor d'urves, and each person goes up, and they have this gentleman that works for a radio station, and he talks about each candidate, and you write in this two-hundred-and-fifty-word essay about each candidate, and they go from there, and you find out a little bit about everybody, and I'm going to let Hannah take it over from there.
Well, it kind of took me off-guard when Kingman told me in the first place that he nominated me, I was like, oh, who else, like, who else is going? And he was like, oh, no, it's just you, and I was like, just, just me? I was like, oh, that's weird. But then, he explained to me like what it was, and like why I got it, and then it kind of made a little more sense. But basically, when I got there, it's definitely a little overwhelming in the beginning. I think also being the only girl, it was also a little weird, because you got a lot more like eyes on you, and especially when I like, they introduced me and I walked in by my, well, with Kingman, but like, walked in, just us two, you know, it was a little overwhelming, but it was definitely cool, even though I didn't win, it was a, it was a really fun experience, so.
Questions from the school? So Hannah, I just want to say...
I couldn't agree with Coach Kingman more, I've known you forever. You've been, you're a fantastic role model for a lot of kids, and congratulations on being the first female nominated...
Thank you.
...for the Gramm Award, and you should be really pleased and honored for that. And I couldn't agree with Coach more that awards like this should be for kids that you, who stand out in the community, not just on the football field, and I agree with you, time and time again, a lot of these kids, just because they ran for more touchdowns, they ran for more yards, get these awards, when they should really look at the whole student, and you picked a perfect one, Coach.
I mean, that's exactly what the award says, and it, I think it gets overlooked sometimes. I've actually have changed the voting protocol for that award in the last two years, just by sending some messages to the people that run it, just because I think that the way it had been voted on in the past wasn't the best way that they could possibly do it, so we've changed that a little bit. I know that the lady that runs the whole, the whole award, she couldn't say enough things, and she was, she was actually super proud when we went in there for the voting, just to bring that up to all the people that were voting, that hey, this is the first time we've ever had a female nominee for this award, and I know the gentleman that started the award, do you know his name?
Ah, New Bedford Volk.
Yeah, he started the award, he actually invited us to New Bedford Country Club after, after the award, because it had happened before, so it was like, you know, usually I just invite the families of the winner, but this is something different, and we've never had this before, so he invited us out after, but all of us had to go home and go to school the next day.
Mr. Olber, your question?
I'm sure everyone probably knows about you and about what you do already, because I've seen all sorts of stuff in newspapers and stuff like that, but I just wondered if you could talk a little bit about, how did you start? How did this start? How'd you get into it?
Well, it really started last winter, because I did the lift program after school, and during one of the days that I was doing that, Kingman said to me like, oh, we're going to need a kicker next year, and I, like, I always joked with him about, I was like, oh, I'll do it, like, because I played soccer for a really long time, and I said, I'll do it, and then he said, okay, I have a, I have a kicking stand and a...
Block.
A block. I forget already. But anyway, so, we... A block. I forget already. But anyway, so we did it, we put it up in the gym with the curtain, so it didn't go anywhere. But he taught me how to do the steps. And he said it wasn't bad. So during the like, Start Strong program, we had the activity fair. And he came up, came up to me, or I came up to him, or something like that. And he said, no, I really need a kicker. And I said, okay, only if like, you really need me. Like, I'm not gonna do it if you like, don't think I can. Or if, like, there's someone else, like, trying to do it. And he said, no. So I signed up that day. And I showed up. And that was really it. That's how it started.
It was on a dare, I guess.
Two things, Hannah. You know, I think it's hard for people to get outside their comfort zone. And especially, like you said, you, you know, your senior year, you decided to change and do something different.
Yeah.
So, you know, you should be proud of that. And everyone should be proud of that. And Coach, I think you too, you know as well as I do, there are a lot of people who would, a lot of coaches who would object to a girl playing on a team, unless they were extraordinarily good. And I think you're the one who's gone out and recruited and looked and had conversations with kids before, not just because you want opportunities for kids, not, you know what I mean?
No, I mean, that's, I, I say this all the time to people. And maybe it's cliche, but, I mean, obviously, I'm biased because it's football. But I really believe that the huddle is the most diverse place you can, you can be. The huddle doesn't care what you are, who you are. You're just trying to accomplish something together every single play. So I don't care if it's a girl or a boy, or, you know, if, whatever it may be. I don't care like, who plays on the team, you know, I just want, I think we can find a home for everybody. And I know Ryan has said this multiple, we just want kids involved, you know? I don't think it's, she said to me multiple times, like, just be yourself. Like, don't, coach the way you've always coached, you know? Because sometimes, you know, it's, you used to be in a certain place. And she's like, no, just be you. Like, this, I'm fine. I want you to coach hard. And so by the end of the year, I, you know, I try to, you know, get at, get at her a little bit and, you know, blow a whistle when she was about to kick, or scream really loud.
Yeah.
It didn't faze her at that point, at that point. She was used to it. Once she realized that, I think after, what, week two or three, you realized that nobody really was gonna touch you. The first couple of weeks, you saw people running at you when you were kicking. You were like,
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, I don't know if I like this so much.
Yeah.
So congratulations, Hannah.
Thank you.
First female nominee for the Autogram Football Award. And she's from Middleborough and a proud member of the Middleborough community. I know your parents are here. And congratulations to your parents, your sister. And you represented us very well. Thank you very much. And good luck.
Thanks.
I mean, I know you still have your whole senior year. But I, you had your signing in the Gazette the other night, that you signed on to play lacrosse up at Framingham State. So good luck with that, too, as you move down in your future. So move forward with your future.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. Now, Mr. Chair, return the meeting to you for a period of time.
Discussion ends. We have our report from Natalia.
So for MECC, for upcoming events, teachers will be beginning their mid-year benchmark assessments within the next two weeks to measure student progress from the beginning of the school year. These assessments are used to see the academic and social growth of students to, that they've made since December. The information will then be shared with the team to support individual students' needs. On Thursday, January 30th, and Friday, January 31st, MECC students will enjoy music and dance entertainment from Crocodile River. This program gets everyone up and moving to music inspired by West African culture. The next PTA meeting is Wednesday, February 5th at 5:00 p.m. The MECC's PTA will also be hosting a Scholastic Book Fair on February 5th and 6th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Preschool and kindergarten registration is now open for September 2020. All interested applicants should apply online through the district website. Preschool registration is open until February 11th at 3:00 p.m. And the public lottery drawing will be taking place on February 12th at noon. Kindergarten registration is open until March 13th, 2020. And appointments will be made through our central registration office with Mrs. Goodine. For the MKG for upcoming events, the MKG Drama Club will present Seussical Kids on Friday, January 31st at 6:30 p.m., with the doors opening at 6:00. For HBB for upcoming events, the next round of after-school clubs will be beginning shortly. Sign-up sheets will be sent out to parents soon. On Friday, January 24th, there will be a Spirit Day. Students are encouraged to deck out in Berkland's best gear. HBB teachers will be visiting Harrington Elementary School in Lexington on February 7th. They will, they have partnered with Harrington School in efforts to learn from each other in the area of social emotional learning. Parent-teacher conferences will be hosted on February 11th and February 12th. For Nichols Middle School for upcoming events, tomorrow, January 24th, Nichols Middle School will be hosting the first Massasoit Math Meet of the Year. Ten different middle schools from surrounding towns will be competing in five rounds of five questions. And we wanted to wish the NMS students luck during their competition. On Tuesday, January 28th, there will be a Special Tiger Tuesday. January is National Hobby Month. And on January 28th, students will be encouraged to dress in a fashion that highlights their favorite hobby. For MHS for past events, on January 11th, members of MHS Student Council attended the Massachusetts Association of Student Council's annual Unified Bocce Tournament at Walpole High School to be fans in the stands as they cheered on our athletes and their partners. On January 10th, 11th, and 12th, the MHS music program was successful in hosting their annual music production, this year's show being Shrek. On January 15th, members of Middleborough Student Council attended a Sea Mask Regional Conference at Foxborough Regional Charter School, with representation from Declan Hastings as webmaster and Noah Miles as the 2020 president-elect. Throughout this week, from January 20th to January 24th, MHS GSA hosted a no-name-calling week. For upcoming events for MHS, the final exams begin tomorrow, January 24th, and will be concluded on Monday, the 27th. MHS will be getting out of school at 11:00 a.m. on Monday. On Friday, February 1st, members of Student Council will attend the MASCE Unified Dance at the Special Olympics Headquarters in Marlboro. This is an event to celebrate inclusion. Winter Ball will be hosted on Saturday, February 8th, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. in the MHS gym. Tickets are $10 and will go on sale starting Monday, February 3rd. And Powder Tough Volleyball will be taking place on Monday, February 10th at 6:30 p.m. And this is an event where the boys take place of the girls playing volleyball.
Questions from Natalia? Mr. O'Leary?
I understand. You have a final tomorrow?
Yes.
So when are you leaving?
Um, I was gonna leave after this.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Natalia. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do well.
Thank you.
Good luck on your exam.
Thanks.
Next up, school committee members. Any school committee members have anything they wish to mention? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to Frank. How are you, Frank? Mr. Cutino?
Good evening. It's been a while since I've been here. December was a somewhat rough month for me. I was out of school, actually, for most of the month of December, because of a reaction I had to one of the chemo drugs. And actually, I had no hair, which you guys didn't get to see until, now it's just obviously starting to grow back. Actually, my wife tells me that it's like, it's like it's fine, like, 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 like a baby's, like, like on a baby, for the, like, their hair. It's really soft. That's what she tells me. So I'm feeling a little bit better now. So that's pretty good. I'm on a maintenance dosage. They took me off of the other stuff, because I had a bad reaction to it. So couldn't do that anymore. Hopefully, just getting back to doing stuff. I have finals to administer, as do all the teachers up at the high schools. So, other than that, I've got nothing, nothing else. Any questions?
And hopefully, everything will work out great. You'll continue to stay.
I will continue to fight.
Thank you, Frank. Monet Waterlilies. Thanks, Frank. Thanks, Frank. I'll turn it over for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I just wanted to mention, I did stop by Mr. Cutino's classroom yesterday. And he was finishing the day strong. I know it's probably a long day for him, given the circumstances. But he was, he was in front of his class, and he was ready to go for the last period of the day. So it was great to see him back in the school and back doing his job, which is great. The first part of my report this evening, under number one, is the Middleborough High School Scholarship booklet update. And I'd invite Mr. Brandigan down for a couple of items, actually. First, noting that, as you know, school committee policy requires us to vote on new scholarships each year. And although we do not have a new scholarship, we have a renamed scholarship for a young alum who unfortunately passed this year. And so we invite Mr. Brandigan to talk a little bit about the scholarship booklet, which you have. And Chair, Mr. Chair, it's really up to you if you want to vote or endorse. That's entirely up to you. Doesn't require a vote, but you're certainly welcome to.
First, explain what's going on. Would you change?
Good evening, everyone. So before you is the 2020, Class of 2020 program, the scholarship booklet. And they were, at this time, there were no new scholarships being added. That doesn't mean that we don't have anything in the works, that we're still waiting for things to come in, just like last year. I would come before you if we had one that was added in at a certain point in the spring. So we did have one where Rycow Construction had offered a scholarship last year. And they wanted to continue that, but they wanted to change the name of it in memory of Dana Kelpie, who passed away very tragically at the end of December. So they had been working with the family, and we're just really quite honored that they were going to be able to offer that, and in the memory of Dana. So that is reflected in here. The scholarship booklet is created in three parts. It has all of the Middleborough applications. It's a common app for those particular scholarships. The second section are the scholarships that are offered by Middleborough Dollars for Scholars. And then the third section is scholarships that have a special application. So there's some nuance of that particular scholarship, that that committee or foundation or family, they want to do their own thing with a scholarship application. So we kind of organize them in a, in a certain way. That the goal with Your Blessing, that we will be organizing and finalizing all the pieces. And that we'll be posting online the scholarship booklet on Monday, February 10th. And then we follow it up with a senior opportunity for families to come in. And we do a scholarship information night for seniors and their families. And that will be held on Wednesday, February 12th. And then we will close the portal for scholarships, because we do the whole thing online, that that scholarship program will close on March 13th. And then we will begin working with all of the families and foundations and sponsors over the next many months. And that we'll be sending out invitations to those students who are receiving a scholarship in mid-May. And the scholarship night would be held on June 3rd. So.
Mr. Cradigan, just for the record, I guess, the scholarships that are given out individually from clubs, whether it be the Elks, the Mitch Club, the Kiwanis, a number of different organizations who make their own decisions, that's one thing. There are also a number of bequests that were made in scholarship name, pre-pals' names, that decisions are made in a different way. Can you sort of explain how those happen? And what we're talking, we're talking about over $100,000 easily, that folks have left for future Middleborough students. And those continue to grow. So if you could talk about, just about that process, just for a little bit, so the school committee has an idea?
Absolutely. So there are many scholarships, as Mr. Lynch said, that, you know, like, the Elks will make their decision, and we will send them the applications, and they will review, and then they will tell us the names of those recipients. And that's how many of them work. But there are many of them that they charge the high school to be able to make the selection of those candidates. So with the criteria that they've given, they work with us to make sure the fact that the, that those recipients are based from the applicant pool of those students that applied. And then also, the Middleborough Dollars for Scholars is really unique in itself, that Dr. Gates is the chairwoman of. There's a team of citizens that come together, and that those scholarships, that families or foundations, that they want to offer a scholarship, that they actually work with Dollars for Scholars, to have that scholarship housed with them. And then the Dollars for Scholars will create the criteria with that particular family or foundation. And then ultimately, that they will work within those parameters of the family, or whatever the scholarship may be, to make those selections as well. So there's quite a few of them that have certain nuances and kind of a special aspect to them, that makes each one of the scholarships that are given out every year pretty special.
And when scholarships became popular back, especially back in the 50s and 60s and 70s, there was an attorney in town named Albert Madigan, who was the, sort of the attorney, had a shingle out. And he, when people left trusts and left irrevocable trusts or scholarship trusts, they left it with, with him. He has since deceased, dressed his soul. But his two sons, Kenny Madigan and Tom Madigan, and Tom Madigan's son, Patrick, now stand in for the family. Both Tom and Patrick are attorneys. And they stand in for the family representing those folks who had worked with Mr. Madigan, Sr., to develop those scholarships way back when. So it's quite, quite fascinating. We get a lot of applicants from the current Class of 2020, and a lot of alumni scholarships. And people need to be aware that just because you're in your second, third, or fourth year of college, doesn't, or medical school, or whatever it might be, does not mean that you can't apply for these scholarships. So.
And the other thing, too, is these, these scholarships don't also pertain to Middleborough High School students. Some of them pertain to students
Certainly.
From Middleborough.
Right.
So
But this just happens to be our booklet.
And they can talk to the, somebody can come into the guidance council and get a copy of the booklet to see what they'd be available for and stuff like that. So.
Absolutely. And alumni, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep.
Any questions about it?
Usually posted online, correct, Mr. Brandigan? Thank you.
Then the chairman had today in a motion to approve the scholarship booklet. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, other than Paul. This is a fantastic, you know, time and time again, when you attend the scholarship night and see the amounts of scholarships that are given out, and the wide range of students that get it. You know, I think last year was about over 100 kids who get scholarships. It's pretty impressive. They're all given a little bag. They come up on stage and hear what scholarships they got. And they go off. Everyone gets to look through their bag. And it's kind of fun.
It's a nice night.
So I would thank everybody who's involved. The other thing I should mention, too, is sort of, the way the scholarship works is, it's one fill-out, if you will, for most of them. And then you apply them to the areas that they would be eligible for. So it's not like a family has to go out and apply for 20 different scholarships. They just go out and apply one time. And Guidance Department filters it to everything that they're eligible for. So that's good, too.
Yep.
Any further comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Paul.
Mr. Chair, next on the agenda is Middleborough High School scheduling. Mr. Brandigan had submitted some information to the chair. At the end of last meeting, there is a committee that was established per the MOA that was made with the MEA, Middleborough Education Association. Everything that was asked in that, in that ask, the MOA was done. Mr. Brandigan and a representative committee have been working hard diligently, weekly, on this schedule. But he's going to explain where the committee is right now. Mr. Brandigan?
So just to bring you an update on that, that this committee has really worked very well together over the last many months. And when we began the work in September, and you know that I came before you twice to give you updates of where we were at, that we really got ourselves into a place where we really felt good about some of the decisions that we were making in the future of really what the schedule would be. However, we ended up hitting into a place where we had some really heavy lifting that needed to be done. And where we were up against at the same time was the time of year where the scheduling process would begin for the upcoming year. And the committee really felt that it was important that we really do this right. And to do something where we needed to take some of the heavy lifting. And there was just elements that we were not anticipating. And when we got to a point where we had the schedule, we had the structure, it really then became, well, how do we kind of take all of the things that we had that are part of our current schedule? And how does that now infuse into a new schedule? And that's really where that work needed to happen. So the blocks, the scheduling committee, that we made a decision collaboratively, of really a request to really postpone it, and to really regroup, and to actually come up with a new timeline, which we've done. So the committee actually met yesterday, which is our weekly meeting. And I had presented to them a draft of really a timeline. And the goal is, the goal would be, that we would have a schedule, that we would be implementing the schedule in the fall of 21. So it would be, this upcoming school year would maintain the in the fall of '21. So, it would be, this upcoming school year would maintain the current four-by-four block with the launch of the new schedule in the fall of '21. But what that means is, is that there's really big benchmarks that we need to be meeting. So, what we did is, it now becomes not just the committee itself, but it's really now the faculty, and really having us work collaboratively to make sure that some of these really heavy lifts are really done. But more importantly as well, that really, as we are transitioning into a new high school, really, how does that speak to the new building as well? So, I just want to say, share with you the committees that we decided upon yesterday, and that what we'll do, start to do now, is start mobilizing those committees, and work through the spring of this semester. And the goal is, is that a lot of these committees, we're hopeful that we will be able to meet the goals of these committees by the end of June. So, we have a really formal timeline of what we're going to be doing every month as a committee, and that will get us to June 30th. At that point, we will do another mobilization of goals for the summer of '20, to maybe make the assessment of where we're at by the late spring. And then, ultimately, going into the fall of '20 with really all the pieces in place. So, we're actually doing the protocol we do every fall, which is really the analysis of the program of studies. So, the target is, is by the middle of December of 2020, that we will actually have the program of studies completed, to bring to you in early January, that actually would be reflective of all the major pieces that this has to have involved. That doesn't mean that there's still work going to be done in the spring of '21, but ultimately, that the actual structure and all the pieces will be in place. So, the committees now that have been mobilized is really looking at time on learning, the advanced placement, you know, courses, the development of really a senior capstone, which could really be an opportunity for us to really take a good look at what could happen in a senior year, especially for students who have met all the requirements. And that would be looking at early college, and the partnership with Massa Soyit, the internship program with things like the fire science program and all of that. But also, being able to give students an opportunity to do maybe action-based research, or to do a full-time internship in sub-capacity. So, we need to do that exploration. Doing a real review of our electives program, and what are they, and what's the purpose of them? Looking at special education, and really ensuring that all the individual education plans are really updated and reflective of the new schedule. Looking at graduation requirements, and a credit system. And one of the things that we've been doing some research on is really the creation of pathways, and so that students can find themselves in pathways of really where they're passionate about. So, that may give us an element to be able to do some of that work with the requirements. Really doing the infrastructure work of Aspen as well, to make sure that the backside, you can load all the courses in, but you've got to make sure you've got the structure that's reflective of the day-to-day operation of the schedule. And really looking at that advisory block that we had shared with you, that personalization time, and what would that look like as well. So, the goal is, over the next couple of weeks, we're going to be really finalizing these committees to have a real purpose for them. What is the goal? And really, what is the benchmarks we're hoping in these committees? And then, in February, and in March, and in the full professional day in March, that's when we will mobilize the entire faculty for the day, and have them begin the good work with the committee itself, of actually finding these committees, so that they can actually have a piece and the voice of this process as well. So, the goal is, we will have a schedule. We're maintaining the structure. That structure's not changing, unless it's something that's compelling, that says maybe instead of having five rotations, it's four, or six, or whatever it may be. But ultimately, the work that we've done isn't being tossed to the side and started all over again. It's taking the work that has been done, and how does it infuse with really the mindset, and the goals, and the vision of the school, so.
Questions?
Consideration.
Well, Mr. Chair, it's a thank you for all this work, the continued work for the next year and change, to get the 2021 fall, 2021 goal met. I knew when we were sitting in that room, it was going to be a daunting task. I think one, two, three, four, or five of us were sitting in that room, and we tasked people who weren't even in the room, six, sorry, who were sitting in that room, and we tasked you guys to do something. And you, it was a little unfair at first, I think, but wow, you did. You took it and ran, which I think is great. And you're continuing with it, and your whole team. I'm very appreciative of it, because I think it's something that needed to be done. And you're meeting my thoughts and expectations personally. I think that I didn't expect that we were going to be able to do September '20. It just, it was so, such a push. And I'm glad we didn't try to push it out. And I'm glad that you guys are, the way you're putting it together, the way you put everything together, Paul, so, and your team. It just, we know that it's going to be a success, because you're doing it right. And I'm so thankful for what's happening with this block schedule, and the deviation from it to a regular, a less block schedule. And I'm glad we're working on those internships, because they're great opportunities.
Other questions? Then the chairman had today in a motion to accept the recommendation of the committee.
So moved.
Doria Second. Discussion. Just so everyone understands, and Paul and I have had this discussion, as have the superintendent, it is a part of the contract and a memorandum of agreement. While Paul outlines what the committee would like, the superintendent and I will sit down with the union and still have that discussion to make sure the timeline meets the requirements of the contract, and goes from there. We have a subsequent meeting still on stipends to do, and I believe we can probably bring that memorandum of understanding up at that time, and have a conversation about that. So, until that happens, you know, we still need to work on that. But, you know, I understand the plan. As I said to Paul, I understand the plan of his committee and the understanding, but we still have to have a conversation with the union, okay? All we're doing is accepting their recommendation, and we're going to have that conversation with the union about it, okay? Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Paul. Thank you for your hard work. Please thank the committee for all the work they've done.
Thank you.
As I continue with my report, I would like to invite Ryan Sylvia, our athletic director, down. He's always got something interesting to update us on, in the world of state athletics. Noticed driving by, we have some new scoreboards that are going up, and so, that's sort of an exciting time, certainly. So, Mr. Sylvia, welcome.
Thanks. Thanks for having me. Yeah, a lot of action out on the athletic facility. It's exciting to watch. I do have one, the first update I want to highlight, since I just got called down here. I just got the Twitter update. The girls' basketball team is now 10-1 and qualified for the state tournament.
Awesome. Great news.
So, that's as of tonight. So, I guess I'll just continue. I think I had two items. One was just kind of an update on athletics for the winter season, and then, something on the school store. So, that was the biggest update. I just, I just said we're about halfway, or a little more than halfway through the season, and girls' basketball is probably our most successful team at this point, alongside our girls' indoor track team, which was, were co-champions of the South Shore League. As of last week, they tied with an equal record to Randolph High School. So, they'll put another year on the banner, and they have the league championship coming up next week, along with some invitationals and MSTCA events and things like that. So, the track timeline ends a little earlier, as does swimming, because then, they go on to sectionals and states, while all the other teams are still playing. And the rest of the teams are still in the hunt. The hockey team and the boys' basketball team still have a chance to make the tournament. Might be a little bit of a long shot. They're still kind of rebuilding and getting better this winter, so. The wrestling team, same thing. We're still in a co-op with the Ponacuit Regional High School team. We have three wrestlers that come over and join up with that team. They're, we've only had three league matches, I'm sorry, four league matches. We're 1-3 in the league, but we have some wrestlers that are really competing at a high level from an individual standpoint, especially with a couple of female wrestlers that we have on the team that will go on and wrestle in the All-State Tournament eventually, when we get to that point later in the year. So, I'll give some updates on that, too. But, in general, it's going well.
Mr. Sylvia, just not to interrupt, but I just want to say that the high school girls' basketball team is now appearing in different newspapers, in the top eight or the top 10 in the area, correct?
Correct.
I noticed that Greg Dudek, who happens to be from Middleborough, but writes for the Herald, and some other folks, they're really starting to recognize the work of Coach Jeff Powers and these young ladies. Jeff Powers being an alum of Middleborough High School, and he's doing some great work with that group of young ladies.
Yeah, it's great to watch, especially Jeff being an alum. The assistant coach, you know, they're at every practice together. Joe Posey is also an alum, and doing a great job with the JV program. But, yeah, they qualified for the first year with that coaching staff. They qualified for the tournament last year, won the first round game, and then, lost over at Ponacuit. It's my hope that they continue their success, and I'd love to host a tournament game in that gym before we see it go. But, yeah, if you follow the Brockton Enterprise, the Patriot Ledger, they have constant kind of weekly updates on the top 10 schools, top 20 schools in the area. And you'll see the Middleborough Girls' Team in there quite a bit. They're kind of moving their way up the ranks. So, it's exciting to watch. Talented group of kids, so.
And there is no undefeated girls' team currently in the area. BR went down the other day, their first loss, I think. So, there is, there's only teams that have one loss, and Middleborough are at the top of the list there.
Yep.
I look at the, I got to look at the positive everything. I keep thinking of this team, Mr. Chair, this team's out there in the lobby at the Nichols Middle School for an undefeated season, too. This, the same group is.
A lot of the same girls.
It's a lot of the same group. It's just amazing to see the success.
Yeah, we'll see. I mean, they have a chance at a league title. We've got some important games coming up. So, we'll see kind of how it plays out. And I didn't mention the swim team. They're having a phenomenal year. I think each side, oh, boys have two losses, or boys have one loss, girls have two losses. Some big meets coming up with Norwell, and then, next week, the league meet, which will be hosting the league meet this year, which is exciting. We, the school combined with, the school department combined with Masba, really invested in the facility with some nice new lane lines, and backstroke flags, and a scoreboard that is, you know, as good as any in the area, in a scoring and timing system, which is really important for those kids touch the touchpads, and they see their score come up on the wall. And it's just an exciting, it'll be a really exciting event on February 1st, that Saturday.
And through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Sylvia, I was on Martin Luther King Day, stopped by the Berklin Complex, and noticed that Jim Hutchinson was there all day, changing the medium, the company in there changing the medium in the pool filter, which made an incredible difference in the water. But he was also installing a diver's tub. Was that purchased by Masba also?
Yeah, so Masba, the boosters club, we actually had two of our divers, who are state qualifiers, asked to attend a Masba meeting, which we meet monthly in the library. And they gave us all the reasons, the Masba board, I should say, all the reasons why they thought we should have a diving tub, and a warming tub for in-between dives on competition. It's pretty inexpensive. It's actually a 300-gallon horse trough from Tractor Supply that we fill with hot water, and they sit in-between dives. But it's the same type of thing that you'll see at some of the colleges, or even in some of the Olympic trials. It's just to keep them warm in-between dives, because the swimmers are, you know, when they're in their events, they're constantly moving, so their bodies are staying warm. The divers, it's more of a waiting, you know, wait your turn. You're in the pool, then you're out. So, it is, there is an important kind of athletics factor there, too, so. And thanks to Jim Hutchinson for all the work he's done in that pool. You'd be amazed sometimes, you know, the chemicals get off, and we're calling him over vacations, and he did a great job this past vacation, making sure that our kids were able to still get in there and practice and compete.
Yeah, Mr. Hutchinson spent a lot of extra work in that pool, and extra time, well beyond his workday. I would tell you that, straight up.
So, that's the athletics update. Is there any questions on that, before I get into the school?
We should also mention that even though we're in winter, fall, All-Stars came out, and we had quite a selection of kids who made the All-Star teams, especially for the Enterprise and everything like that.
Yeah, yeah, we can follow those on the, like I said, the Brockton Enterprise is really our paper that covers Middleborough, along with the Middleborough Gazette. And we really strive every season to make sure we're getting those nominations in, and we want to see representation from every team, from every Middleborough team, on those all-scholastic teams. And I think, for the most part, we had a representative from every team. And then, the league All-Stars, those are recognized at our awards night at the end of the season. So, we always, we always have representation there, too.
Any questions about that? We'll talk about the store, Ryan.
Yeah, so the store is, I'm pretty sure we have it pulled up here, have an example of what we're trying to do, if I minimize this.
You have to escape what's actually in the PowerPoint right now.
Oh, I have to escape the, it's showing up on this screen, just not on the big screen.
Show it to the rescue.
Okay, just talking about this.
Yeah, so, basically, we're just trying to make a change from the way we currently run the school store at the high school, and similar to, I think, some of the way that the middle school does it, and some of the other schools in the district. But, three years ago, we started an online store that opens for a set period of time. And I'm sure everyone's kind of seen this. So, it might be open for two or three weeks. The store closes, all the orders get placed, and then, they get to the high school, or to whichever school you ordered from, and get distributed that way. They come back with names on them. It's been, it's worked well. We were able to get the school brand out there. We were able to offer some apparel and things that people like, and it looks good. But I've kind of been waiting for this type of store that I'm presenting today to come out. And what it is, is a company called BSN Sports, that is on the mass higher-ed consortium list for pricing. They're on the state bid list for athletic equipment, athletic apparel. And they came out with this concept, which, like I said, I've been waiting for. It's a 24/7/365 online store that ships directly to the consumer's home. So, but it's completely branded with all of our Middleborough logos, Middleborough proof logos, wording, slogans, things like that. They have all the top brands. They also have off-brands, so there's different price points for what you want to order, and basically, anything you want. Not anything you want, but for the most part, the apparel items that people are looking for in different brands and different styles, with your Middleborough logos on them. So, the pros to doing it this way is, we no longer have to open the store, close the store, and then, have all the stuff shipped to the school, and then, picked up. You're ordering it, it's getting shipped right to your house. What we get out of this is, there is an agreement that we have to review between the superintendent and myself, but the basic agreement is that BSN, so long as we post the school, the store on our school website, which is how you access it anyway, and post it monthly through our social media venues, our athletics Twitter and Facebook account, they will give back 10% of the net profit that they make on the store. And that comes back in the form of a rebate. And the reason it's attractive to me is because they're on the state bid list and offer all types of athletic equipment. A lot of the stuff that we bid on for the new school project actually is coming from BSN Sports. So, it's something that we can actually use when they give back to us. Currently, the store we run through Grover Marciano Sporting Goods sends us a check back for the percentage that they give us back, and it just gets deposited into the athletics revolving account, and goes towards the same type of stuff, equipment, uniforms, those types of things. So, this is really just, I don't know if this is something that needs to be approved or not, or if it's just something that, basically, I'm asking that we go in this direction. And this is, this site is not live yet, but as you can see, it's got some pretty good styles. We have to kind of approve all of this and make it live. But I wanted to make sure that the school committee and our central office knows what's going on and what we're trying to do.
If we approve it.
Ryan, when do you think it would start?
As soon as we approve all of the logos and lettering and everything that goes on it, it's ready to go. So, I've been working with the company to kind of build it a little bit. Just.
Does anyone have questions for Ryan? Richard?
I was just curious, for the designs that you guys have up there, is there a process by which an interested student could propose a design that might be put on these things?
There is. I mean, they'll put anything on that we ask them to. I think part of the process is, we want to try to maintain a certain level of branding.
Sure.
So, as long as it's something that is approved by the school district, then I think we could include maybe the art department or something like that.
Cool.
Through them for our baseball team?
So, we order our baseball hats through, you know, the bid process, and through the vendors that we use for athletics, equipment, and apparel. But we could, they could certainly be.
The only reason why I ask that question is, is I always love getting a good baseball hat. I'm always in a hat. That's something, most people will say, they know me for being in a hat most of the time. And I always like to have the baseball hat that the team's wearing, or something like that. I've got an old one from, God, eight, nine, 10 years ago, that I still wear. It's in my truck right now.
And you're not the only one. I mean, people, people around school know that we order a certain amount. And you're not the only one. I mean, that people, people, uh, kind of around school know that we order a certain amount of hats. We have to have the right number of sizes and there's always a few extras and then we'll sell them through Masba and things like that. But it, we could, we could put the authentic Middleborough varsity baseball hat on the store. It might be a cool item to have on there.
The other reason why is it's always nice to, cause you get either a jersey or something. Anything like that would be kind of a cool thing if it was something that was available. Cause I love the logo that is on the, um, the back of Shaun's phone, believe it or not, but the, uh, that he's got in the room. But it's, uh, the logo that's also on the web, the, uh, the webcam for the school up in the corner. That's Seachem's one. I love that logo for some reason. I just think it's a cool logo. I didn't see it in the list, but if, if need be, but, uh...
Yeah, I think we have that one somewhere in here.
Is it?
Yeah, there, there, the, this company has done a really nice job, but there's, when you scroll through, I mean, you can search by... Yeah, there's a lot of different items. It's men's, women's, kids, accessories. And it goes, it kind of goes on and on. I mean, headwear, bags, chairs, drinkware, blankets.
Mr. Chair? I would move that we authorize the superintendent to, uh, sign off on a, an agreement once he's happy with it?
Discussion. Hearing none others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thanks, Ryan. We appreciate it. I mean, I think it will be more helpful to people to be able to get things and ship to their house and not to make a stop by the high school, especially for Christmas runs.
Yeah, the, uh, the, you know, twelve bo, cardboard boxes stuffed in the office handing out before Christmas was exciting, but...
It's also a bit of a security breach also, because we always ask people to go through proper channels to get into the building. So, thank you, Mr. Sylvia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on my agenda, uh, on my report this evening, Mr. Chair and members of the committee, is I just, I had discussed the executive functioning workshop that was planned for last week. I, I just want to tell you that I did have a chance to, uh, attend that workshop. Uh, was very impressed with Judy, the presenter, Judy Johnson, the presenter. I want to recognize the fact that Mrs. Latenda was there, Mr. Gobiel, the assistant principal at HBB. Long day for them, but it was well worth it. Uh, I would say there were between thirty-five and forty parents there, um, with a lot of really good interaction. It was a style workshop where she presented information, but she said right from the get-go, "As we go through, if there are any questions, please ask." And it was really an interactive meeting. So really impressed with the meeting, really impressed with, and a lot of positive when people were leaving. A lot of people said some nice things about the fact of the workshop and we should do be more, do, doing more of these. I do want to mention the fact that, uh, it was made possible through a grant from the McLean Hospital, who continue to support, uh, Middleborough Public Schools programming in a number of ways. And thank Megan Quirk, who was our Family Resource Center Director, who did write and apply for that grant. She's also the one that applied for the grant for the interface, uh, and all the, the, the referral service and all the rest of it. So kudos to her, but also kudos to the forty or so parents that came out and the administrators who were there, learning all about kids getting organized and how to help students get organized at home. Yeah, I think it was helpful for anyone in the audience, no matter what age your child is or what age you are in terms of getting organized. So just wanted to mention that and, and kudos to all those folks. And now, uh, after all the pretty good news, uh, we have some, some information to present to you tonight, which has developed over the course of the year, uh, which Sarah Hickey's going to talk about in terms of what has created a budget shortfall with us or for us with regard to, uh, the special ed, uh, accounts. So, Ms. Hickey, take it away, please.
Thank you. So I've, this is a presentation that I had put together for town manager Bob Noons. So, um, there's a lot of information in here that's background information. It's going to be helpful if, um, if you have questions, if we do the questions on each slide. And so I'll stop at the end of each slide for questions. So, uh, some background information about special education. One out of every six public school students in Massachusetts has some type of disability that affects the student's ability to make effective educational progress and require special education services. School districts are required to provide these special education services by both state law and federal law. And the state and federal governments provide financial support for these services through four main funding streams. Chapter seventy funding from the state, Circuit Breaker from the state, the IDEA is the, um, a grant from the federal government. And then we also get municipal Medicaid funds. Questions, anything on this slide? The Circuit Breaker, um, funds from the state, uh, the State Special Education Reimbursement Program is commonly known as the Circuit Breaker Program. It provides additional state funding to districts for high-cost special education students. The threshold for eligibility is tied to four times the state average foundation budget per pupil as calculated under the Chapter Seventy program, with the state paying between sixty-five and seventy-five percent of the costs above that threshold. So for example, the state average foundation budget per pupil was eleven thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars. Four times that would become forty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. So essentially, um, the state will reimburse a percentage of the amount we pay over that forty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. So the example that I put up here is if we have a student, um, a special education student that costs the district's a hundred thousand dollars, the district's eligibility, uh, eligible reimbursement for that student would be the, the difference of, of the hundred thousand minus the forty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-two. And then seventy percent of that would be what we would be able to get back. Uh, the district receives Circuit Breaker reimbursements for the district's prior year's expenses. For example, reimbursements for fiscal year nineteen expenditures are received in fiscal year twenty.
So looking at the example that you used on a one hundred thousand dollar student, if it was, uh, if it was reimbursed at seventy percent, by seventy percent of the over the piece, it's really a thirty-seven percent, seven, thirty-seven point nine four five percent at that, that example. So the, so this Circuit Breaker doesn't cover, cause I've, I've had this argument with legislators and I had the argument with the governor. I said, "If you'd fully fund special education," and he says he does. I said, "You don't." I said, "Seventy-five percent is a hundred. I don't care where you look at it. I'm an engineer." And it angers me every time because this is as bad as not getting reimbursed for transportation when they're not meeting their requirements. It's an unfunded mandate that we actually are required to do. That's a shame, but, um, it's a cost that we absorb somehow and we're going to have to figure it out. I'm not mad at, I just, I'm furious the state doesn't fully fund special education. They, the most vulnerable students, they really don't care. Quote me on that one, anybody. Sorry, thank you.
Any other questions on this slide? Extraordinary relief. In addition to the regular Circuit Breaker reimbursements, the extraordinary relief program provides funds to help districts experiencing a significant increase in their special education costs. Under this program, districts may file an additional claim form in March for the current year's estimated expenses of the eligible, and I'm gonna, uh, eligible expenses. Those are the expenses over the forty-five thousand dollars I spoke about in the last slide. If the eligible expenses have increased by twenty-five percent or more over the prior fiscal year, then the district may be eligible for an additional extraordinary relief funds to help offset the increase. Any questions about extraordinary relief?
Just wondering, what, what is the process to, I guess, compete for, for that money? Is everyone always submitting applications for that? So I guess the question really is what are the chances of that, um, coming through?
Well, that depends on whether we can, whether we're going to hit that one hundred and twenty-five percent target, one hundred and twenty-five percent of last year. So if we have the twenty-five percent over, then we'll be eligible. And it's if our eligible expenses are twenty-five percent over our expenses last year. And I'm going to talk a little bit further about the eligible expenses in a, in a different slide.
If I could, Ms. Hickey. Carolyn Lyons, our PPS director, applies for this every year. It's a formula that she goes through and applies for it every year and looks to see if we're eligible. So it is something she does as a matter of course in her professional responsibility every year.
Typically get something.
Yes.
Transportation. Many special education students require special transportation services, which the district must provide if it's included in the student's IEP and/or it is necessary to access the district's offer of services. Transportation is an expensive component of special education programs for students. We in Middleborough have the transportation department, specialized transportation. And the, we have the vehicles and the staff and the drivers. And there are also students, so there are students that we just don't have the capacity to drive at this time. So I think I've spoken in previous meetings how I'd like to expand the transportation department. It's something, I'm, I'm excited to tell you that we had three drivers out sick the other day and we had three substitutes that just stepped in and took those routes, which is how it should be. I'm really excited that the kids got to stay on the same bus, just with a substitute for the day. So the transportation is, uh, we have our transportation department, our in-house transportation department. But, um, we have students that moved in and we just didn't have the capacity with the vehicles we had back in August to drive students, although we're required to. So we had to contract out and the private contractors for transportation are, are really making a lot of money off of school districts. We have no choice. We have to transport the students. And some of the bills that we get from some of the companies we use are really outrageous.
One might characterize it as gouging.
Price gouging, yes. So the, what I really want to talk about tonight is out-of-district placements. This chart shows us the different type of out-of-district placements. So when a student has, uh, needs and needs special edu, specialized education, for the most part, we can accommodate those needs within the district. There are certain students that we cannot accommodate within the districts with specialized programming or in an inclusion setting, and these students require an out-of-district placement. There's three main categories for out-of-district placements, private placements, public placements. And then some students are homebound or hospitalized. For the private and public out-of-district placements, there are both residential placements and day placements. And I put underneath the day placements, um, transportation. Those are the, so a student that goes to a private day placement in Randolph or a public day placement in Canton might, uh, needs to get there to the school. So we are required to transport them. And for the purposes of what Middleborough was looking at this year, I've taken off that homebound hospitalized part of the chart because these are the types of students that we're going to be talking about. The, um, out-of-district placements that are in both private and public residential and day placements. Any questions about types of placements? So this graphic here, um, starts at the blue disc at the bottom. So the blue, uh, circle at the bottom are, it represents the students, the out-of-district placements that we knew about in December of twenty nineteen. So Carolyn Lyons, the PPS director, submitted her budget requests to me. She needed one point seven, one point eight million dollars in order to accommodate the placements that we knew about in December. That was put in the budget. I presented that to you in February and that was accounted for. The next circle out in my Venn diagram is, uh, represents three students that were additional out-of-district placements. One in the end of January and two in March became out-of-district placements. Though the total amount for those out-of-district placements that we learned about by July first was a hundred and fifty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars. I committed money from the, um, the revolving fund, the leftover Medicaid money that we have in a revolving fund in order to accommodate that and in the fiscal year twenty. The next green circle out represents, um, two students that were in-place students that were accommodated at, in Middleborough Public Schools last year that were put out into out-of-district placements after July first and unanticipated placements and unavoidable placements, but former Middleborough students. Those two placements, those two additional placements cost seventy-seven, I was about, about to say seventy-seven million. Seventy-seven thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. And then since August fourteenth is that yellow circle, we have had an additional eight students move in. August was kind of a crazy month. The last week of August, we just had, um, multitude of students move in to the, or families move into the district where the students already had out-of-district placements on their ed plans. And the total cost for those placements is six hundred thirteen dollars, six hundred thirteen thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars. And these monies that we're looking at here are solely tuitions. The, uh, the additional eight placements are also costing us an additional hundred and ten thousand dollars in transportation that's not represented in this chart. Questions about this slide? So I wanted to present this as for, for the visual effect. If you look on the far left-hand side of this, uh, December of, that's December of twenty eighteen when Carolyn Lyons submitted her budget to me, um, that's what we knew about in December of twenty eighteen. It was essentially a one point eight million dollar budget for tuitions. The next point on this is in June of eighteen when we had those additional two students, I'm sorry, the additional three students, uh, go to out-of-district placements and that, uh, money was accounted for out of the Chapter Seventy-one, I'm sorry, the Medicaid money. And then the last point on there is where we're at currently. And this piece here is essentially, that's that six hundred ninety thousand dollars from the previous slide. And that amount is essentially one-third of our original budget. So, um, so this six hundred and ninety thousand short, dollar shortfall is one-third of what we had originally budgeted for this. And that seems like good news, that thirty-three percent is going to be over the twenty-five percent for extraordinary relief. But one of the things that we have to be cautious of is that forty-five thousand dollar threshold. So if a student has a forty-eight thousand dollar placement and they move in, we had a move in in January. If they move in in January, we're only paying half the year for that. And so that's been the case with some of the students that have moved in, um, that we're only paying a portion of the year. And so not as many students will go over that forty-five thousand dollar threshold. So we may or may not get extraordinary relief. We, it requires doing all the math out in March to find out.
This additional six hundred thousand is the pro-rata six hundred thousand? Or is, in other words, the six hundred thousand that we're talking about over and above the original budget, this one-third number additional, is that just what we're going to pay this year under the current budget? Or is it, because next year, those, that same number is going to be a bigger number added on to the one point eight million?
Yes.
So instead of being two point four, next year it could be closer to two point seven, two point eight million?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And that doesn't include transpo, transpose and additional, uh, for all of this is probably going to be, not the hundred and ten you were saying, probably closer to three hundred thousand in transportation, would you say?
Hopeful. So we added two new vehicles to the fleet this year. They were actually delivered to us within the past few weeks. They were actually delivered to us within the past few weeks, and they've had plates put on them yesterday and radios put in them today, and looking to get those on the road and take back some of those private runs. We, the fleet is an aging fleet. We have a lot of vehicles that are over 100,000 miles, over 150,000 miles. So, the fleet is an aging fleet, but things are running fairly dependably. So, we're looking at taking the two new vehicles and taking back several of those private transports, starting Monday.
Mr. Chair? How many students are represented in this 2.4 or whatever it'll be, 2.7 budget approximately that were for tuitions?
About 34 students. And, and just to comment on that, the, I belong to a listserv for all the school business managers in the state, and there was a question that went out recently from one of the school business managers, just asking the group, "How many students do you have in your district, and how many out-of-district placements do you have?" And, I'm a numbers geek, so I have a little chart of all of the people that responded to it and the percentages of what, where they are, and we're kind of right in there. It's a, this is not an alarming number. We're not at 25% of our students have special ed out-of-district placements, but we're also not the least on the list.
The reason why, Mr. Chair, the reason why I ask that question is, I will have an opportunity once again to badger the Governor about this, as he tries to put an extra 135 into the already billion-dollar MBTA subsidy. We need it for other things. We need it for students. We need it for education. And, it bothers me as they keep trying to add to these other subsidies that we neglect. And that's, I keep saying it, and people keep saying to me, "Why are you a Republican if you say this?" It's neglect, sheer neglect that the state does this, because it is an unfunded mandate, as far as what happens every time this happens. And, I don't think enough people are screaming. And I think everyone should, everyone should scream to their legislators and to the Governor that they need this, this work done. Cherry-cheat, House 1 came out the other day. We've got a $70,000 bump again in Chapter 70 money. That's unsustainable. I've got over 3,000 students. We get 70,000. How are we going to make this up in the 70,000? We're not, pardon my language, I just, it frustrates me because we need the help and the state doesn't give you the help. They'll give you this complex formula, because as you have more and more budget there, you physically, you're a math person, you physically can't get to the 25%. It's almost unattainable unless you start off at 250,000 and add 300,000 for the year. Then you might get the 25%. So, it's just, it gets, it frustrates me. I apologize, it just frustrates me.
And through you, Mr. Chair. It can be kind of a shell game on the part of the state. For example, the Charter School Reimbursement Fund went up significantly this year, went from 60,000 to 260,000 for our district, which I looked at and said, "Wow, that's great. We can put that towards education." And then, the Charter School reimbursement, the message came over that they upped their requirement to 312,000 this year. So, it's a shell game. So, the money went up significantly on the Charter School end. Our money went up, but our money goes, just disappears to the Charter School. Which is part of...
Well, I'm on my box, because I like to get on my box on these things. I dare anyone to go to any charter school on the Massachusetts DESE website and look at how many students are required to be outplaced and they have to pay for, which the number is zero, because we pay for them if they get to the Charter School and they need an outplacement, even if we could have provided the services, because I know that that happens.
I was wondering, the transportation costs were, are above and beyond what we're seeing here, right?
Yes.
And are they eligible in this extraordinary relief, or not?
So, the Governor put in transportation reimbursement in the budget that came out yesterday. They're going to be reimbursing at a rate of 25% of eligible costs. So, one of the things my office is going to be busily working, so there's, again, there's the two deadlines in the spring. It's, it's almost the same paperwork, the extraordinary relief and then the circuit breaker. But, the putting, my office is going to be very busy putting together the transportation data, because we can't just take the invoices from the private contractors that we've used and say, "Okay, these are our transportation costs." We also have to take our drivers and say, "Okay, you were driving two hours in the morning for agricultural students going to Norfolk Aggie or Bristol Aggie, you were, and then you drove an hour driving a student to or from the MECC, and then the rest of your day was going to South Shore Educational Collaborative and..." So, the picking through the time sheets for the, this fiscal year of the drivers and figuring out what was out-of-district transportation and what was in-district transportation and what was agricultural transportation is, is going to be the fun project for the spring. And, only the out-of-district transportation costs are going to be reimbursed at the rate of 25% of eligible costs.
Got it. And, Mr. Chair, just to follow up on that, the, the new vehicles you mentioned that could possibly take care of some of these additional transportation costs, even just in extremely rough numbers, just so I can get an idea of it, do we have any idea if Mr. Chivononi's number is right, about right, about 300,000, maybe extra in transportation costs? Is that what I heard? Do you, how much of that could we potentially cover with these new vehicles? A third of it?
The two new vehicles? The tough thing is, you have a lot of students that all need to move from place to place at the same time. And, one of, you know, one of the issues that I realized last August, we had a family move to town, and the, there was an out-of-district placement where we already had a vehicle going there, so it was just to add the child to the bus that was already going there, but the other child was going somewhere else and we didn't have a bus going there. So, that was something that we had to get private transportation for. But, with the two vehicles we have, we can't take back eight or 10 or 12 kids that need to, all need to be on a vehicle at 7 o'clock in the morning. So, it will help, but it's not going to solve everything at this time.
So, just to outline where we're at, as everyone knows, just to take it through the beginning, which is, we start this process in January, as we'll start it soon, for budget. We do the presentation. We are required under law to have a balanced budget as of June 30th going into July 1st. So, what happens is, when we create the budget, we create the budget and we understand that there can be changes, you know, as we always have. So thankfully, Sarah was able to not need us to make changes for July 1st, because she had the extra Medicaid money to cover what we knew about going in. So, as we move and progress to the end of August, then you run into a situation in which you're getting students that you weren't anticipating, that's now adding a third to the budget. So, Sarah froze the budget with superintendent's discretion. We froze the budget for non-essential items to buy. But unfortunately, the additional placements that we had coming in end of June, early July, moved the rest of the Medicaid money that we've out. This is not an unusual circumstance. We've had this every year since I've been on the committee. The problem is that we've had funding sources to which to retain them internally. We don't have the funding source for this. So, Sarah and, Brian and I talked, and I asked Sarah to send a letter to the town manager and explain what the situation was. This happened at the beginning of, middle of December. He and the town accountant asked to meet with the three of us and Carolyn Lyons last week.
Steve Dooty.
We all sat.
Steve Dooty.
We all sat and met with them. And so, just to be 100% clear, and to go with what Brian had said about how this causes chaos, we can't take this off. We don't have the capacity in our budget to add 700,000, that amount of money. We're going to ask the town at the special town meeting prior to the annual town meeting for the additional funds. I think Bob understood, as did Steve, why we needed to do that and how we were able to, over a period in time, stop it. But, as Brian says, $700,000, which comes out of free cash, makes it impossible to do some other things in the community. Now, the problem lies in that we don't have a choice. These students came to us with IEPs that we had to honor and deal with. I will say this, in some cases, we've had, we know of students who may be in the midst of something in which they could potentially move, and we could turn over that piece to another district, but that comes when everything plays out. So, there is some of that amongst those additional ones. There's not a lot of wiggle. And as Brian pointed out, this moves into next year's budget, too. Now, you know, we'll sort of get to that when we get to that. But, you know, this is a hard piece. I mean, one of the things that we've sort of prided ourselves on is every year, we were able to work within our budget to make things like this happen and work, and not ask the town for additional money. You can't anymore. You can't add a third to the special ed line item and then expect that a town, any town, can absorb it. It's never going to happen that way. It's just too much, and as Brian said, this is really a state issue. I also think this is a, this is a good example for some of the state legislators, especially for the most of them are new, Brian, as you know, to have a conversation with them about what we're going through and why we're going through it. So, it gets to be tough. But, what we've sort of committed to with the town manager is to make sure that we're at that, any presentation that he's going to do, be it with the selectmen or the Finance Committee. I've been, Carolyn Lyons and I have had a conversation, we're, the two of us are going to be at the special ed pack to have a conversation with them, to let them know what's happening. And, you know, we're going to let the community know as best we can. But this is a considerable amount of money.
Mr. Chair? No matter what, we are providing these services, flat out.
Right, I mean, exactly.
So, there's, there's no, no question about that. It's the funding source, even if the town is fortunate to take some of that $4 million worth of free cash, which has been spoken for in other places, that we had to spend at special town meeting in the fall, to cover this year's shortfall, it's that cumulative additional 8, 900,000 that is next year's piece that we're going to have to, not to mention of everything else. So, so, because you, even though there's free cash this year, you can't, you can't budget free cash for next year, because you have to assume it's going to be zero. So, yeah.
The other thing, too, is, I will say this, the, the business manager did give us a more in-depth analysis, partially, which, if you will, because of the nature of special ed, she gave us assignments, for example, of tuitions with grade levels. I don't necessarily want to put that out in the open, because people know. But what I'd like to say, and I think is important to say, when looking at those levels, you know, one of the things you look at is the age of the student. And so, for example, if you have somebody in 12th grade or higher in high school, chances are that they're going to age out and some of that money will come due. There's not a lot of aging out. You know, in some cases, these are some preschool kids. In some cases, these are kindergarten kids that we will have the entire time. So, it isn't, you know, it isn't like I can say to you, "Hey, we have a lot of kids in high school age that will eventually progress off in a relatively short period of time." That's not the case. I will also say to you, this is one of the fundamental reasons, and I know Heidi's here, that we push extraordinarily hard for Middleborough residents to come to the pre-screening for pre-K, because it's our belief that if we get some of these kids who have needs in the need of services as early as possible, then by the time they start kindergarten and move on to elementary school, there may not be as severe a need as when you get a student who just comes in first grade or just comes in kindergarten. So, that's why it's important that we reach out and try to find everybody and try to get them to the pre-K. The other thing I should say, too, in regard to transportation, one of the things that we're looking at along with the town accountant is the idea of, in the past, for example, there has been some question about can we help transport with other communities? So, the example would be, for example, if we were moving a Middleborough kid to Plymouth, and Plymouth had a kid that was coming back to Middleborough, we know the van driver's back, coming back, could we pick them up and transport them to Middleborough? We're looking at that. The question becomes, where do we, how do we put those funds in? How do we make sure those funds are eligible for what we need it to be, which is the transportation line item of the special ed? So, we are looking at other things to do, too. So, that's the other piece.
And, Mr. Chair, we, that number is pretty astounding, obviously, and a bit of a shock factor, but it's also a number that, that we are, right now, in a budget freeze, doing essential spending only. We reevaluate the budget on a weekly basis in terms of a summary, and we'll continue to go through every line item and basically take every line item we can that's not going to be spent this year and put it towards this, so that we can reduce that number, possibly, in any way, shape, form, or manner that we can, so that the number is, it's obviously a considerable number. I would say that these sort of years are cyclical. Sometimes it's between seven and 10 years. They come up these years, and it's, it's a difficult swallow here, uphill to swallow, but we really need to educate the town in terms of why we're doing this and why this, this need is imminent. Mr. Hope, you had a question?
So, that leaves off what you were saying, Mr. Chair, about the, working with other towns to maybe figure out some kind of creative transportation solutions, but just as I'm trying to reason through it in my own head, it seems like, obviously, we have to provide the services. We want to provide the services for any kid that comes here. The reimbursement is a percent of actual, always, it seems like, right? It's never 100%. So, we obviously can't just say Middleborough is not accepting any new residents at this time. But what is to, what is to prevent us from just going under in a bad year? And, and is there, very similar to the things that we do for, where, you know, some of the janitors and facilities guys have trade skills and they know how to do some things that can save us money over other things, is there some sort of capacity we can build internally here for handling special ed so we don't have to send it outside?
Well, we do. I mean...
More.
So, there's, well, yes. Yes and no. I think the important part is this. We have tried and continue to try to create programs where it makes sense for students of similar special needs, so we can have them internal. We also partner with our collaboratives, so that if we are having a student who has special needs, we, we bring them with other students of special needs. I think one of the things, Rich, that's problematic is, for example, in all of these cases, these were IEPs developed prior to coming to Middleborough. So, the students are someplace else. So, even if, let's say, three or four of those kids had similar needs and we could create a program here, parents are hesitant to move to a program that hasn't been developed and is just starting. They want to see how it works and how it's a part of. I mean, you're a special ed teacher, you know this better than I do. And so, it's important to note that, you know, there has to be buy-in from the parents, too, and you really have to create these pieces. Carolyn Lyons does an exceptional job going over what a student's issues are and what their best placement is for the district. And, that's completely reevaluating. Sometimes, parents don't like it, and they allow it to go to a hearing process, in which we present both sides and go back and forth, but that's always ongoing, Rich. So, it's never that, capacity is always being looked at as obviously how best to save money. But, I think the biggest thing to remember is, this isn't about money as much as it's about making sure that the needs of that particular student are fulfilled.
Of course. Carolyn looks at fulfilling the obligation, the need of that child... Carolyn looks at fulfilling the obligation, the need of that child. And if we can do it in-house and we have built capacity, we've brought PT, OTPT personnel in, we used to sub all that out, and now we, you know, we've built that capacity within our district. She looks at every last little piece to see if we can provide that service, all the services that student needs. If not, out. We, we have to, to bring that child out. And I know she's awesome at that and looking at it and then brings it to us if there's even a question of whether or not, because, because sometimes a parent will demand that their child be put someplace and we work it out, go into an executive session to discuss it. We've been there. Carolyn is great at that.
I think the other piece that it's important to know is that the state knows that this is an issue and they've required districts to create a special ed stabilization fund. And so we've been through the process in the October 2018, the fall town meeting authorized the creation of a special ed stabilization fund. We've created the account number for that, but there hasn't been anybody stepping forward with bags of gold saying, here, put this money in your special ed stabilization fund. So I, I was new in October of 2018 and I asked, so where does the money come from? And I was told you need to budget for this. Well, again, no bags of gold anywhere, haven't found them. So we, we have an empty account that if it had money in it, if we could build it up eventually somehow, but we can't build it up and spend it at the same time.
This is the perfect opportunity to show the town why we established that account and to have conversations with them, much like the stabilization account that the finance committee maintains. You know, when a town is, has extra cash and is able to save some money, I mean, it's a perfect place to put some money to save for events just like this. Other questions?
If not, thank you, Ms. Higginson.
Sarah, thank you. So we really appreciate it.
And I would continue with my report now, Mr. Chair, through you. Moving on to elementary technology acquisition, we'd like to bring Dr. Melanie Gates down and certainly appreciate her hanging in there. Heidi Latenda is also here. This actually, technology acquisition involves sort of all the elementary, but particularly the more early childhood center. This committee, through the budgeting process, has made a commitment to technology acquisition at the lower grades. Obviously, we have the one-on-one, the upper grades. And here we are as an example of, we had some champions money that was available that you destined for technology. And we'll be able to move some things around. Each principal had their own budget money for technology, able to sort of put that together. And I, and I sort of charged Dr. Gates with getting together with elementary folks. We had, at the time, Ellen Driscoll was, had a little bit of a vacation break prior to the holidays, and Melanie was, Dr. Gates was able to work with principals and come up with a plan. And it's really so close financially, but we're looking to possibly use some of the champions money to fulfill the complete, to complete the order. So Dr. Gates, welcome, and it's all yours.
Thank you, Superintendent Lynch and School Committee. Thank you for this opportunity to support gaining more technology for our elementary schools. I hope that you've been able to access the memo that was shared to Chairman Young and also to you all as committee members that outlined the plan as directed by the superintendent. We had a certain amount of money available to try to provide as much technology across the elementary as possible. And in receiving those funds and thinking deliberatively about our programming currently and what future programming we may have in store, I took time to just research what are the tech, tech specs for all of that current and future programming to ensure what devices we did acquire would meet our needs. In doing some of that research, I was then able to have an informed meeting with our principals, because it's not just about saying what is the technology that maybe I might think you need, what is it that you feel you need, how much do you need, where is the need? And not only how do we acquire additional technology, but what do we do with the technology that we currently have? It took a variety of, of meetings, face-to-face, phone conversations, emails, lots of back-and-forth, but we were able to come to agreement on acquiring Chromebooks for the complex, so technology for the complex. We identified a Lenovo Chromebook. To be honest, it's a pretty kind of lower-end device, but in looking at what our actual needs are for the device and how our, our students are currently engaging with it and engaging with it in the future, we felt that this device would meet our needs at this time and for the, for the very near future. It is a Chromebook. Most of what our kids are doing is really going through web-based applications. They're not using real programs that you might see on a Windows device. And since we are essentially a Google district with our Google accounts and students accessing those Google productivity tools, it just seemed to make sense to align them to the use of a Chromebook. We made sure that it was compatible with our current programming as well as what we have coming down the road, particularly with our partnership with Project Lead the Way, which we have embarked upon this year, starting in third grade at the Mary Kay Good, and we are kicking things off currently at first grade at the Berkland. So there'll be some exciting applications of technology. What we were able to do was acquire four carts for each school equipped with 24 Chromebooks in each. So the acquisition was the 192 Chromebooks, the Lenovo 100E's. They have, they had good ratings and durability, considering it, these devices would be in the hands of little, of our younger students. We thought having something that had some water-resistant capabilities would be appropriate, because we do encourage our students to stay hydrated, to keep their brains, you know, highly functioning over the course of the day. So in addition to those Chromebooks, we also had to acquire eight carts. The carts have yet to come in, so it's actually holding up the distribution of the Chromebooks. And the G in the middle doesn't just stand for Google for the Chromebooks. We, for every Chromebook, you have to buy a license to add that Chromebook to the management console so that the Chromebook can be managed within our environment. These Chromebooks are going to our fifth grade, where we felt there was the biggest need since fifth grade takes all three MCAS, ELA, math, and science. We just felt that due to the, you know, the demand there, that that was appropriate. We also just thought it would help naturally progress up to the exposure to Chromebooks at the middle school. The four carts that are going to be given to each building does not provide us absolutely with one-to-one, but we pretty much will be. By cobbling together the older Chromebooks and distributing them at fifth grade, our real goal is to be one-to-one at that grade level. The remaining technology that we have would then be distributed across grades one through four as appropriate. We do feel that we have to be cognizant of screen time for all of our students, not just, you know, we had to realize how much screen time they have within our schools, but also the extent of engagement outside of school, and we want to be cognizant of that. Technology doesn't need to take the place of a pencil. It should be reimagining learning and providing outcomes that a pencil or some lower technology cannot provide for us. So, you know, there's obviously the need to have the technology, and through this opportunity, we're very thankful that we were able to acquire this for our students. It will help us with our benchmark testing at the elementary, where we use STAR 360 for literacy and math assessments. We also have ST Math, which is a wonderful program that we are, you know, really seeing the benefits from. So it's just going to provide more flexibility for our teachers to engage with current programming, but I think there'll be many changes coming down the road, too, as the increased access to technology will provide for us. Within the memo, there's a little bit of ask in terms of the tech for MECC. In working with Mrs. Latenda and thinking about what is reasonable technology to have at, at MECC, just doing some quick research through Common Sense Media, they say that no more than an hour of high-quality engagement in technology is appropriate for our kids between the ages of two and five, which largely covers our age spans at MECC. We certainly would not even try to come close to an hour of engagement with this. We really do believe in more of a play-based approach at the early childhood center, because that is what's developmentally appropriate for our children, and our teachers do a masterful job at creating play-based learning. So this is just something that can add to it, to increase our kids' exposure, help us also individualize some of the experiences that we provide for kids, as well as provide some access to some accessibility resources in terms of, you know, there's opportunities to provide texts where the kids can have the text read to them while seeing the text being highlighted on the screen. There's so much capabilities with it that we can explore. With MECC, we did, we would like to acquire a tablet. And of course, a tablet, you know, is susceptible to drops regardless of what age you are, so having an appropriate case would be important. The real big deliberation that we had was about the charging and storage solution. Mrs. Latenda and I both envisioned having a small number of devices being provided to each classroom that the teacher can rely upon regularly to use as part of their centers-based instruction. So it was, do we look at what a charging and storage solution would be by classroom or do we look at something more centralized? And if we look at something more centralized, how can we keep it organized to keep track of that equipment? So in doing research into the various solutions that are out there, we came across a company called Lock &amp; Charge, where they have this cool system of baskets that they use that are put into the various carts. They're color-coded, so they have red, green, and blue baskets, and the cases that we were looking at also came in red, green, and blues. We were starting to think about how we could organize it just to, you know, make sure that we're keeping track of our equipment and, and teachers know these are my devices, just to help with that visual queuing in that regard. But the baskets would help us in being able to store these charging carts in centralized locations, where teachers can then go and pick up their basket of devices and carry it to their classroom for use as needed throughout that day. So the plan that we arrived at, unfortunately, is coming in at numbers higher than the available amount of funds provided, which the funds provided consist of the budgetary value of, I think it was $5,000, and the prorated amount of the champions' initial funding distributed, that was distributed across K through five, or I should say, pre-K through five. Our plan with the, with distributing, distributing technology at MECC is inclusive of all of our classrooms, from our preschool up into kindergarten, which represents a total of 15 classrooms. So this plan has not been executed. The values that, in terms of MECC, the technology acquisition for the complex is already in place. We have everything but the carts, and those will be going out on the floor hopefully by the end of the month. We have not acquired the technology for MECC due to the fact that the, the pricing is coming in over the available amount. I will say with just clarity that the quotes that I received are probably now over a month old, and as technology evolves, you know, we would have to look to see if this particular model of the tablet is still available. So there's, there would be legwork that I would need to do to fully actualize this plan, but based upon what we currently know, we would be seeking some additional funds in order to acquire this technology for MECC. I think the request for the additional funds would be appropriate, given the fact that we don't see an immediate need for a larger increase in technology at MECC. Unless we have a big boom in population that results in us ending at, you know, like another classroom or something like that, we don't really see an immediate need in the next few years to then acquire additional technology. This would more or less saturate MECC with the technology that we feel right now is appropriate for our students. So we feel really confident in the plan. You know, a plan is, is only as good as the planning process, and I think we've been pretty comprehensive in that. So this memo to you is just seeking an opportunity to potentially tap into some additional funding to, to acquire technology as laid out in this plan. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all might have. Yes.
Granted, I get you're a couple of months old, but...
Yeah. In the second to last paragraph, I asked for an approximate increase of $3,000, which is over what the quote would be from, based upon what we have for funds, what the quote came in and what the difference is. I asked for more just to cover what potential overage there might be based upon the shift in pricing. I'm slightly fearful that the model that we initially identified, which is also by Lenovo, it's an Android-based tablet, the Lenovo Tab E8, it's only an eight-point, an 8.1-inch display, which Mrs. Latenda actually has a sample with her today. And initially, I think there was some, like, thought of, whoa, this is kind of small, but an eight-inch tablet in the hands of an adult will seem smaller, but you put an eight-inch tablet in the hands of, you know, a three, four, five, or six-year-old, and it's, it's not going to be that substantially different. In some cases, it might look like a really large phone for some of you that might have one of the bigger phones. Yeah, I know. So I hate to be so uncertain in that regard, but I did not continue to pursue additional research until, you know, we had a firmer direction as to the wishes of this committee and our superintendent, so I...
I guess the question I have, Melanie, more than anything else, do you think the $3,000 is sufficient? Or, let me, I would entertain a motion to have up to, I would entertain a motion to have up to $5,000, because I don't want it to be $3,010, and then you'd have to come back and delaying the process even further. So before we start the discussion, I would, I would entertain a motion that we use up to $5,000 out of champion funds for the technology acquisition for MECC.
Second.
Okay. And discussion, so...
Mr. Chair, through you, we do have about $6,000 in that account currently. We have spent money on $20,000, which is inclusive of this, prorated by student, and then we have some money that was destined for the nurse phones, and there still remains $6,000 in that account.
Okay. I would say this. This discussion of technology meets with Mrs. Latenda's school improvement plan that we discussed last, at the end of this past year, last school year. It also meets with the MCAS discussion we had, which was the idea of getting additional technology into the hands of students as early as possible so we could get them ready and prepped for MCAS on devices. And again, this is not money that's coming, this is money that's coming in outside through the champions...
Outside of the operational budget.
Outside the operations budget, through the champions' foundation, that, in my mind, is put to good use, especially considering, you know, where we get the most of our kids from, are at the elementary level and at the kindergarten. Any other discussion? Mr. Hope.
Yeah, it, it's more, I guess, more of a statement for, for those that may have been watching the whole meeting. I feel like it's kind of unfair positioning on the agenda, given what we just talked about, but I hope people realize that it is 2020, and to add technology where there was none, especially where, I remember I specifically asked a question before, like you mentioned, about MCAS and kind of the, the, well, it's online and, you know, that they didn't have experience with devices, and it seems like this is a no-brainer, and the dollar amount that, you know, that you're asking for is, is so low, and it feels like it's pretty much covered by this champions' money. So, I don't know, it sounds like an exciting improvement, and just a drop in the bucket as far as the larger budget discussion is concerned, it seems like a no-brainer to me.
Other discussion?
If I just may, you know, with the motion that has been made, thank you for that consideration. I was trying not to be overly greedy, perhaps, in this, but I think that is certainly realistic, and we will be diligent to not, you know, expend those funds foolishly, but acquire the technology in accordance with the plan that has been shared with you this evening. And I think if there was any alterations to that based upon, you know, a drastic change in the availability of materials, we certainly worked through with the superintendent to decide on what the next steps would be, just to make sure that we are doing our due diligence and spending our funds wisely.
I mean, you know, the way I look at it is, you've outlined a plan that makes sense to us. If there needs to be some adaption based on something new, or, you know, I mean, you know as well as I do, you can spend X amount on a case, but find out for a quarter more, you get a much better case. And I just, you know, I, I think people take too much time on the smaller piece. You have up to $5,000. I'll say this, that I... I'll say this, that I think, you know, it's, you guys are looking at it, I think we're all fine with that.
Mr. Chair? One of the items that, if anyone ever thought, if anyone's watching at home, if you think about it, we went through a whole process of BYOD at one time. And we tried to get parents to consider buying devices. We had device-buying nights at the high school and really explained what they could buy. It was flat. It just didn't work, because everyone wanted to do whatever they wanted to do at home and they didn't understand that we were trying to goal them in a certain direction. So we have to have the uniformity of 75 identical devices to make sure that we're all pulling in the same direction. When we provided at the high school, we provided at the middle school, they're all the same devices and so, I mean, you know that it's going to work. That's the key to it. To me, it's you know it's going to work and do what you want it to do. So I think that this absolutely is exactly what this money was kind of, we put aside for. And I trust, I actually very much trust that you will be diligent and do what this plan says. I know you, so I know you would do that and be very frugal in your purchase. I mean, I know you've already done that based on what you're looking at trying to do. You're buying, you're not buying iPads for everybody, because that would be $280 a pop. You would love it, but let's be real.
Oh, yeah. iPads are the Cadillac.
I'm a Chevy kind of guy, I'm a Ford kind of guy, sorry. I'm not a Lincoln, I'm a Ford guy, so...
No, it's just being, it's being realistic, you know, there's, to be honest, there's probably always going to be a need to have certain equipment like iPads, just due to some of the needs for some of our special education students, for some of the assistive technologies that they need. But, you know, I think this is, these are good devices that can cover, you know, 75 to 85% of what it is that we're doing for all of our students. So I think it's a wise purchase and, you know, once, once we conclude here and we get the marching orders, I'll start doing research again tomorrow and put out the request for updated quotes and see where we stand.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you, everyone, for your support. It's appreciated.
Thank you, Mrs. Latenda. Mr. Chair, next to my report is the Rotary Meeting update. I just wanted to fill the committee on it. The chair, myself and Derek Thompson met with three representatives from the Rotary with regard to the Rotary Raise Program. They informed us that they are going to continue to fund this program to the tune of $14,000 this year. It's a program at the complex where they identify students, make contracts with students and their parents, to really boost students and extend their school day with a licensed teacher who works with these students. And like I said, it's a contractual thing with the students. So we thank the Rotary. We appreciate everything they do every year. And in saying that, they are funded mainly through their Rotary Auction. And to the folks out there in the Middlebrooke community, that auction is coming up. And they are open to folks who want to donate anything, whether it be a basket that your family puts together, a gift card to a restaurant, any such thing. If you have your own business and want to provide something for the Rotary Auction, you can drop it off at Edgar Furniture with Bob Sackett, and he will accept those lovingly. So anyone in the Middlebrooke community, if you have anything you'd like to donate to the Rotary Auction, please do so. You can contact the Rotary directly through and I can certainly, if you email me, I can certainly put you in touch with those folks. But they are really willing to accept any donation, because it's with those donations at the auction that they have the bids going, and that's how they raise their money. This is their primary fundraiser, and it's important that we, as a school system, certainly support the Rotary in their efforts, because they certainly support us in our efforts.
Auction is March, Saturday, March 14th from 4:00 to 7:00, and Sunday, March 15th from 1:00 to 5:00. So again, they'll be taking donations, I would imagine, up until Friday, knowing the Rotary. But anything that you can give them beforehand would be great. And we should also note this, that in addition to the funds that the Rotary spends on the Rotary Raise, Rotaries also give scholarships, as was seen in the packet, to our community and the communities around us, and they do a really good job with that. And the superintendent and I told them that we would really work hard with them to help in any way we could, if we're allowed, and we'll continue to do that and make sure that, you know, we're helping them, because they're in essence helping us. And again, this is a program that is showing benefits to students, especially in MCAS results, that we are not paying for, that they are paying for, which is a big help to us.
Mr. Chair, that concludes my report for the evening.
Any questions, Superintendent? Want a consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda was presented this evening.
Do I hear a second? Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
The MECC students are really looking forward to that half-day, half-day, so it's a release day, that day, so...
The MSBA, we really don't have an update, because we haven't met, unless you have anything you want to add, Brian?
We met today. We have a weekly construction meeting. We met today talking about a lot of things and talking about the installation of the scoreboards and some of it went smoothly, some of it did not, but we're addressing what did not go smoothly. And so we're working forward with Fontaine Brothers, is a great, great group to work with. They're our builders. Christie Murphy is always on top of things as our compass project manager, owners project manager. And certainly, DRA works hard with us to make sure that the final product is exactly what we had anticipated and what was designed.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but when we last talked, we talked about about an 18-day, we were behind, but you had told us...
That is down to eight now.
That is down to eight days. So they've worked...
They're catching up and they're grabbing their work, it's worked Saturday and in some cases, Sunday. So take a ride by the high school, especially on the weekend, you get a nice clear picture, and you'll see the grandstands going up right now. Pretty cool.
And again, that eight-day overage is built, already built in, so it does not affect anything that we've discussed thus far.
Aren't they starting to brick the facade on the...
Yeah, it's called a mock-up. Yep, they're doing a mock-up in the parking lot, so you can drive by to see what some of the architectural features of the new high school would look like.
Any questions about that? We don't really have any policy update, but we will need to be policy, because I have some new policies to go over. Before we get to the first student contract, the only other thing that I wanted to mention was this, we discussed accepting the report from the scheduling committee. If all possible, I'd like to get a motion from this committee to allow me to amend the MOA when I meet with the union.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And that, would that pertain to the scheduling piece that we had talked about for the high school?
Mr. Chair? Yes? I would move that we exercise the year-four option on the contract for the 2020-2021 school year with First Student.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I would just say through you that we're very pleased with First Student. They're the number-one company in North America for student safety. That includes bus idling, that includes, they study these buses and they study what they do, accidents, anything such as that. Tracy Dunnehu is the manager, a First Student manager. She has been responsive, she has been awesome to work with, and very, very pleased with what goes on with First Student. And I think responsive is a good word, because if there's something that does go on, there is a direct and quick response from First Student. And certainly willing to meet with principals and working to meet with anybody, and advocates for her drivers also, which is important. If their kids misbehave on the bus and our administrators aren't taking care of it, then they need to. So I think that's important, so...
Any other discussion? The thing I want to point out to people is, we have two options to extend. This is the first. So even if we were to extend the following year, we have to go out to bid again within the next two years. So either we'll go out to bid next year or the year after, depending on what we do, but I just want to make sure that that's on everybody's plate. Okay? Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor extending, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And just as a side piece on the agenda, as everyone can see, the vast, all the new hires were the mini bus drivers and monitors, and so, you know, that is, we're sort of adding to that to be able to, like we said, extend routes if we need to, or add more routes to the system, to take money out of private hands and into our own hands to save us money. So that's fantastic. Any other questions? Seeing none, we will meet next February 13th, right before Valentine's Day. Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everybody. We'll see you the 13th.